If we can just speak currently one more minute. Is Heather next to Heather? Well, he's writing down attendance. I made me feel like I was speaking or something. Are you able to do introductions?
I will.
Alright, so thank you all for coming. I appreciate you, we ran a little over, so I appreciate you guys standing around before we finish the four minutes, thank you.
So, tonight our topic is an opportunity to meet with the middle school grade reconfiguration task force and some of the representatives of that task force and get updates on the range of work that they're processing and sort of the status report of where they're at in that work. And so I'm going to turn it over to Heather, let her introduce the members of the task force who are here and she'll lead us in the presentation.
Yes, it's a thank you for allowing this opportunity tonight to, I think, interact with members of the subcommittee so you can talk to members of the task force. We're excited to give you an update on our work thus far. I would like to have the team introduce themselves and tell you about what school they're at, their background, and so we'll start over here and with Liz, so you're up first.
My name is Helen Davidson and I'm at Kenyon Park Junior High, it's my second year there. This year I'm teaching halftime eighth grade English, general ed, and then I'm also doing a halftime instructional coach position. And last year was my first experience doing, teaching a homogeneous class, so I had one section of eighth grade gen ed English, three of eighth grade challenge English, and two of ninth grade gen ed English. That was my last year, and then prior to that, for 10 years I've been at Holy Valley School District, teaching seventh grade of block classroom, English, language arts, and social studies.
I'm Jen Hernandez, I've been teaching in North Shore for 20 years, all of them pretty much at Kenmore Junior High, just a few studs out being a tech to sort of instructional stuff math coach. And currently I am teaching a couple sections of challenge English as well as also to trade, not English math. Challenge algebra and algebra trig, and then as well as I'm also doing the instructional coach piece like her, so for 10 grades a day.
My name's Anne McGowan, I actually grew up in the North Shore School District, so I've been here a very long time. I won't tell you how long that is, but I started my teaching career at Leota Junior High and I was there for three or four years, I taught English Social Studies Block back when it was blocks. And it was a challenge block or honors as it was called then, and then I went to counseling and I've been in Timbercrest Junior High for 10 years as a counselor and so.
And Obadiah, I'm the principal at Leota Junior High and this is my fifth year at Leota.
I'm Josh Sanchez, I'm actually principal at Kenmore Junior High now, it's probably an older card. It's okay, but I started at North Shore for seven years prior. Fifteen years in the district as a math teacher at Timbercrest as well, and then PFP at Leota, and now at Kenmore and a parent as well in North Shore.
Susan Laffey, I'm a parent, I have four children in North Shore School District, one at 10th grader at Woodville High School, eighth grader at Timbercrest, and two at Fair Creek. And I'm a member of both the grade reconfiguration task force for middle school and the academic subcommittee. And it was 2014, November I went, I attended the AMLA conference with all the people in this room, which was really, really positive and beneficial experience.
So, is it still part of the task force?
No.
Oh, we just have representatives. Representatives for the parent. Do we have more parents, any of the parents, thank you for reminding?
I'll get to that in just a few minutes, Kim, we just can see it on the slide, so.
And I'm Gretchen Shek, I'm the director of Cleveland Instruction and Assessment for grade 10.
Alright, so I'm going to start with reading an excerpt from our guiding resources, we believe, Educating Young Adolescents, talks about the importance of middle level education. Every day, millions of diverse, rapidly changing 10 to 15-year-olds make critical and complex life choices, informing attitudes, values, and dispositions that will direct their behaviors as adults. They deserve an education that will enhance their healthy growth as lifelong learners, ethical and democratic citizens, and increasingly competent, self-sufficient individuals who are optimistic about the future and prepared to succeed in our ever-changing world. And then I also just wanted to mention that today I received my, I always look forward to receiving my AMLA magazine from the Association of Middle Level Education, and I was thumbing through it briefly this afternoon. And one of the articles from Rick Wormelly, who is a well-known professional educator and has been a featured speaker at many of our national conferences, middle school, not junior high. And it just really reinforced the vision of going to middle schools and the important adolescent age from age 10 to 15. And middle school is just such an exciting time and I love talking about it because we as a school district have made a decision on the vision of superintendent friends law and the school board years ago, four years ago, to move forward with middle schools. And as I was listening to the parents that were here from Lake Washington last night, and Sandy was here too, just to hear their excitement around what middle school means for Lake Washington and the positiveness now that during their second year of middle school. So, I wanted to take the time tonight to just go through some information around the middle school task force itself, the larger group, just give you some updates about where we've been, where we're headed, and where we're going. And then we're going to focus in on the academic subcommittee piece, the program piece of middle schools. I also want to just, I caution the task force often and the principals, who are also excited about moving to middle schools, I often hear, can we start tomorrow? In fact, last night at the task force meeting, one of the requests was, can't we begin next year? I had to say, okay, we can't begin next year. But change is, change takes time, and so we're doing a huge adaptive and systemic change, and it's not going to all happen in 2017. We're not going to open that door to middle school in 2017 and it's just going to be grandiose and great and everything's ready to go. It takes three to five years to implement significant changes, we need to be cautious and do it well, and so there may be, there'll be things that start in 2017 and there'll be things that we do 2018 and 2019, so it won't all happen at once. Just a reminder, these were the original tasks that the school board requested of all of the task forces, elementary, middle school, and high school. So, these five bullet items that are also listed on our website guide our work. And so, my job as the facilitator is to make sure that we are hitting all of those bullet points in some capacity, whether it's through our main work as a task force or whether it is through subcommittees. We're thankful we have four years to do the work. Lake Washington reiterated that last night when he says, well, we have a whole nother year and a half till we are moving to middle schools, he said, oh wow, that's great, we've got time. So, we're thankful for the time and the work. Kim, you asked about the members of the task force, so here's a slide with all of the members of the larger grade reconfiguration task force for middle school. We have our parents listed on the right, we have five parents who are very committed to the work and have been just instrumental in helping us with the vision and the mission of middle schools. Our district staff is listed in the middle, and then our administrative staff on the left-hand side. And then we bring in, we bring in people as we need them, so Jeff Sherwood has come in to visit, we about HR issues. We've met with him as a subcommittee when we're talking about schedules and what the parameters are around what type of schedule we can have for staffing purposes. Any liaisons that we need, as requested, we bring in as special guests to present to the task force, etc. I know that Amy, when you were vice president, attended one of our subcommittee meetings, so anytime that we need people to come in and give us additional information for the org. So, I heard Nancy say that on our, the website, there should, or it was intended that there was a board liaison for this task force, do you know, was there supposed to be or should there be? Since I've been on here, I don't.
Carolyn can speak to that. As members, we have, it's a liaison to HR, business services, support services, liaison to the school board, and I think, you know, that's an open opportunity. But Heather was talking about when there's need for Jeff Sherwood to come in and help us about staffing, or he came in and talked to the task force, I think, about transfers, and actually to all three task forces. So, we've had that, but I don't think there, my recollection, I don't believe.
We haven't had a formally assigned board member to each of the task forces.
We do to each team. Is this meant to happen?
I think it's just a liaison opportunity, so Amy has come to the task force, middle school in particular, and. We never assigned, no?
So, here's the mission statement that was crafted by the task force, probably almost near the end of our first year. And we had done lots of reading, went to conferences, talked to neighboring school districts, and we felt that facing our mission statement on this, we believe, from the Association of Middle Level Education, and the four essential attributes, which we have listed there, challenging, equitable, empowering, development, and responsive, really will help guide our work as we move through this process, really thinking about the young adolescents. And this really, there are so many complications and resources with that, with this guide and resource, that it really has served us well. These are the four essential attributes, and I know I've gone through those looking before and they're certainly in your book, but I also recognize we have two new board members, so I'm trying to just review a little bit, so please apologize if some of this is repeated. But those are the essential attributes, also in your packet you have the visual graph, we put it up here, but it's really hard to see. So, those essential attributes then are broken down into 16 characteristics. And we use those as a reference point, we, I find the subcommittees, the task force, when we go back and we think, okay, what are those core components of middle school students, what are those core needs that we have, we filter it back through a mission statement and through those essential attributes. Middle school is big, you can go through this book, this, and they have a larger one too, and there are so many wonderful things about middle school, and if we were to just take this book and implement everything philosophically the way it says, we would be overwhelmed. And so, we try to, as a task force, take the core components that we believe are most important for our middle school students. And then our job is to, how do we operationalize those for the North Shore School District and for our schools? So, there's several different ways to do things, there speaks to the core vision of middle schools, but then we feel that our job as a task force is to operationalize that in North Shore, so we spend a lot of time talking about that. The next hand that you have is a document that speaks to some of the characteristics out of this, we believe, about the characteristics of our middle school students around physical development, cognitive, intellectual development, and social-emotional. And what I've asked Anne McGowan, who has been a counselor, as you heard, in the district for many years, and who has worked with this age level, grade seven, eight, and nine, and then also has been doing significant work through Timbercrest with the feeder pattern elementary schools that go into Timbercrest with their sixth graders over the last four to five years. And so I've asked her to kind of speak to what are those, what's the lifelike of an 11, 12, 13-year-old, so that we just kind of set the stage for what that adolescent is, so, Anne, thank you very much.
So, that's a really good question, because I think at this age, it's a, it can be a really confusing age because they still look like elementary kids, a lot of them, some of them don't, some of them are starting to get into looking like high schoolers just by their growth and development at this point. They're not quite adults, but they're not kids anymore, and this is a time where they're really trying to explore and figure out who they are. And I think what I've seen and what I've read and what I know, is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are very critical years and need to help foster and develop that exploration. You'll have kids who come in in seventh grade and eighth grade and they act and look differently, and then all of a sudden something happens between eighth and ninth grade and they just kind of change. So, they're really, it's really the years of exploration which I think is really important, whether it's in athletics or clubs or activities, whatever that is, they're trying to find their niche, where they really fit in. So, what we've done at Timbercrest is, we think it's really important that we reach out to our sixth grade teachers and build those partnerships with them because we know those kids are coming to us and anything we can do ahead of time to help create relationships with them will help us when they come in seventh grade. So, in sixth grade, we just finished our last one today, one of our visits, but we go to the elementary school or see the students three times over the year. We have five feeder elementary schools, so I think the great part for us is we get to know the sixth graders that are coming in, but we also get to see our ninth graders and our eighth graders, we take a mix of both grades and see where they were, and how they come back and how they've changed over those three years, and have really taken those leadership roles. So, you can just see by just that visual, just their height and their growth, but also who they are, they're starting to figure out where they, where they want to fit in, who they want to be friends with, where in sixth grade and seventh grade, they're still trying to kind of figure those things out. So, that social-emotional piece that's coming in. The other thing that we've noticed as a trend, I would say as counselors across the district, is the stress and anxiety that has come up over the last few years has increased quite a bit. Whether it's social-emotional pressures, academic pressures, just in general, there's higher anxiety as kids transition into seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. We're just seeing a lot, quite a few more kids having diagnosis of anxiety and stress. So, that's kind of a little bit of the picture, they're still looking for their parents' guidance, but they're also trying to kind of separate themselves and try to explore being independent, but they're not quite there and still need that kind of guidance, whether it's parents as well as teachers or other adults in their life, which is those kind of things. They're still trying to kind of figure out where they fit in with those different things.
The developmentally-responsive piece is really a core value of the work of our task force, and really trying to make sure that we're meeting those needs of those students and that we're responsive, whatever it may be, through our program, through our athletics, through our schedule, through our advisory time, but really what does that look like, so we're meeting all the needs of the students. Quick update of the task force work over two-plus years, again, this is the larger grade reconfiguration task force. Teamwork, great team of individuals, we're honest, we're open, we're transparent, we've spent time really communicating openly and honestly. Research learning, visitations to neighboring school districts, attendance at AMLA conference since the last three years. I think we have, everyone on the task force has attended a conference with the exception of one person, so we've been able to take over the last three, all 17 members of the task force, except with the exception of one who wasn't able to make it. And we developed and adopted our mission statement based on this, we believe, middle school elements, I'll get into some of those things. Board retreat, study session, we did one last year mid-year, as you recall, I think in February, Dave and Ken, you weren't there, but. Communication and outreach to staff and community, we did some parent nights last spring and we spent, we spent time inviting intermediate elementary teachers or anyone who was interested to come learn about middle schools through maybe after-school sessions last spring and then again in the fall. On our last one in October, I think we had 42 elementary teachers come and want, come to the two-hour optional meeting to learn more about middle schools, because I think they're trying to wrestle with what decision are they going to make, and do I want to stay in elementary or am I going to want to move to middle school? Task force recommendations, decisions to date, we are a group that recommends, the decision is when we do something within internally, like our team norms, we decided on those collectively as a group. But our mission statement, this we believe is our guiding philosophy, team norms, and the process to make recommendations, we agree to consensus when possible, thus far we've been able to do consensus on everything. Those are all decisions we make internally. We have a critical elements document, which is a working document, that's the next handout in your folder, that outlines all of the core, what we've chosen to focus on in the preparation for middle schools, based on the, we think the most important needs of middle school, critical elements. And then subcommittees and the focus of the work, so it became clear early on that this was big, and there was no way that the larger grade reconfiguration task force could dig in and really dive deep into some of those core components of middle schools. And be the kind of the overseer of the work, so we put four subcommittees together thus far, I think we have a few more to go, but we, everything is like, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to send it out to a group, because that's what it's going to look like and their focus of work. Schedule recommendation, last night we were able to, after a year, almost a year off and on of working with the task force, with our staff, and helping them understand middle schools, and then looking at what does a schedule look like for the adolescent, we were able to put forth a recommendation last night for a schedule in 2017, which the consensus was in what we call an AV schedule, which is four block days and then one, one through six day. So, that was put forth last night as a recommendation. The next steps for that will be that Jeff Sherwood and I will sit down with NSDA and look at all the specifics around that. And it dawned on me a couple weeks ago, or sometime over the holiday break, that we conceptually can, we conceptually can get a schedule recommendation, but I can't do anything with a bell schedule till I know what the start time is. So, we're now going to sit on that schedule for a little while. So, we're going to sit on that schedule, we have the conceptual piece, we know the components of it, we know that it's four block days, one, one through six, we know that it has a time in the day for some type of, I don't know, advisory option. Every school has something different, we have a time at Kenmore, we have a pack time at Timbercrest, bright time, right, obadiah at Leota, bright time, round table time, advisory at Kenmore, and tighten time at North Shore. So, we have all these different times in the day, and so we need to really try to, our next part of our work will be to figure out what does that time look like, so that will. But as far as a bell schedule, I told the high school task force this too, yeah, once we, we're going to sit for a while because I can't put it together with bells and break time and when that time is without having a start time, so. Do you have the basic hours in the day? Well, we know we have six and a half hours, so. So, within an hour, how many hours you have, you can break it down. Yeah, we know, we have the, we're just as far, it doesn't impact the middle school, I don't think as much, when I think about the high school, I know is, is the importance of they really have a nutrition break in the day, and middle school also believes that nutrition is important, but they do it through a different route. But where do we put that nutrition break and then where do lunches, it's all based on what time of day we start. So, those are the things that I can't, that we can't really talk through till we have that start. So, the critical elements that the task force early on agreed that were really the core components that we wanted to make sure we study and work for in 2017, some type of a flexible time advisory, I just mentioned that, athletic intermial program, what will that look like with grade six, seven, eight? elective philosophy, we have to make sure we have standards-based core curriculum for grade six, seven, and eight. Interdisciplinary teaming is a core component of middle school, what will that look like, and then of course, transition activities. Gretchen's going to talk a little bit about what the core curriculum will look like for sixth grade.
So, sixth grade curriculum is delivered differently in a middle school than it is in an elementary school. Being at a middle school gives us opportunity for daily instruction in math, science, and social studies from content experts, and that can be one of the big advantages to moving to middle school. So, we're in the process of identifying course content and instructional materials, and our goal is to have as many current sixth grade teachers who want to go to the middle school to have experience in the new curriculum prior to the transition. So, this year we have eight sixth grade teachers teaching sixth grade springboard, English Language Arts. Two of them are at Lockwood and the others are scattered at different elementary schools. And our secondary ELI, John Helgeson, meets with them regularly, he visits them individually at their schools to provide coaching in the new curriculum, and he brings them to the program. He and I met today and he said one of the things those sixth grade teachers are asking, can some other colleagues join the springboard next year? And certainly if we have sixth grade teachers who want to be middle school English Language Arts teachers, we can expand that, your principals will appreciate having teachers come in with full experience. We had a math lead teacher team meet today, it was our department, we have department heads, junior high, and another teacher who brought along from their department, we're taking a look at what our next math adoption might be. In that case, we're taking a longer look at that, we don't want to do a new adoption in the middle grade reconfiguration, so. The math teachers, Jen and Sarah, they came to agree with that, it's time to update curriculum since it doesn't match with the Common Course Standards, but willing to give some really serious time to study and clarify for a decision. We have a social studies pilot starting second semester this year, that'll be in grade six and in grade eight, grade seven is going to remain a question state of study. And working for a couple years with our Next Generation Science Standards lead teacher team, and they've been looking at course model options, and we're definitely looking at some that provide opportunities for acceleration. Next Generation Science Standards South raise the level of rigor for science instructional students. And we're still working on.
State law requires K8 to receive 100 minutes a week of health instruction, so we are averaging over the course of a year, so we are working on the health piece of that as well. So, what are the core curriculum requirements, does the state say that our math or science have to be implemented by a certain date, that our materials are updated? Or do they give us anyway?
The accountability piece is the state assessments, so we already have smarter balance assessments in the math, and our teachers have been making adjustments in their instructional strategies along. The science assessment is scheduled for 2018.
At the sixth grade, or fifth grade?
Right now it's at fifth and eighth.
And that is already taking place?
That's on the MSP and the old, I mean the previous.
Subcommittees, the task force, like I had mentioned, sent out work to be done by four subcommittees. I'll give you just a brief overview, the athletic intermial group, we actually did our work last. We actually did our work last May. Had parents and teachers and coaches come together. And we have a tentative recommendation that went to the task force last May. It wasn't for a formal consensus because we need to put budgetary considerations to it. But we did a combination of competitive and inter-mural sports. Important to note that sixth grade students cannot compete competitively with seventh and eighth. So they have to have their own program, grade six.
Okay, would that be interelastic? So across the junior high or just within the junior high?
We can do that between, we can do that with other junior highs. They just, they have to do their own.
So sixth grade volleyball or basketball could go to the different junior high schools? Yeah, is that hard for you?
Is that something that you did, uh, to care, so we decided that? Or is that a goal that we're following?
No, that's W I A A, they only do grades seven and above. Transitions, we have a group that come together and looked at transitions. And Anne was a part of that group. We met in October, looking at the need for additional web coordinators. We're moving two grade levels. Remember, you think about middle school, we're moving two grade levels in. So we only have one-third of our school remaining that has actually been in that physical campus. So we're moving two grade levels in. So we have to have additional web coordinators. So we're training a whole slew the first week of February. I think fourteen, sixteen people we have going between the high school and the middle school. Orientation activities are being designed. Councils from all middle schools have met. Our next steps were continuing to meet with this group. One thing I wanted to mention, really appreciated a share of you bringing in the folks last night from Lake Washington. Just the importance of the partnership between the principals and the PTSA and the school communities working together to implement those transition activities. And you, I think they were very, you know, don't start, we can't start too soon. So the activities that we're thinking about doing this spring and then throughout next year will just be all that more important to help make sure that these kids and families integrate more to middle schools successfully and to our high schools as well. But it was just the importance of the partnership. Thanks just to continue that work and then to partner with the PTSA through the different school communities. Middle school elective programming. Sixth graders for the first time will have opportunities to choose electives. So our current program, you know, they take library, PE, and music as their, in their sixth grade program, as their core program. So we'll have an opportunity for sixth graders to choose electives. So the subcommittee developed a draft philosophy. They still have to continue their work, so it's in draft form. But really just focusing on the essential attributes again and drawing it back to what does this, what does it say about the importance of the electives for the middle school student? And spoke to exploration and really thinking about trying to, those interests of students and letting them have choices and what do we provide for them? So electives may include drama, music, visual arts. You can read all those, computers, technology, leadership, world language. In eighth grade, I just wanna give you a current lay in the land of how we currently do it. So eighth grade has three semesters that students get to choose for electives. Seventh grade has three semesters. And then sixth grade, they'll either have, it'll either be two or three semesters. Depends on health fitness, I apologize for that. That was, yeah, thinking of the one core. But in sixth grade, health fitness will either be a semester long and then they would choose an elective option on the other side of that. Or health fitness will be a year-long required every day and then they would just have two semesters of electives.
Can you remind me how the elementary music program works? Does orchestra start at fourth grade and band in fifth grade currently?
No, I'm more in math.
Yes.
Okay.
So just three semesters, not two semesters?
Yeah, she should say two or three.
Okay.
For sixth grade.
No, well, no, in eighth, I mean, right now, are you? Eighth school year only has two semesters and eighth grade. So are we talking about trilesters or?
No, we're talking about the half of the semester?
One semester of health and PE, the other half, or one, yeah, one semester. The other half of the year.
Almost a period and a half.
Period and a half.
Right, so the first period can be banned. And then second period, you would have PE first semester and then again second semester.
Oh, I see, so you get kind of one choice the whole year and then half a choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, or if you, you could have three choices in total. Cause if you wanna take three different semester electives, you could have three different options.
So you could do culinary arts first period, first semester, tech ed first period, second semester, health second period, first semester. And then library aid or something. Your second semester of your second period, yeah.
Just trying to, you know, talk in private. Right, yeah. And you know how many eyes were on this panel? No, no, that's probably more fatigue if she was reading. No, even the principals, we looked at it yesterday and we didn't catch that either, so. So just to finish the elective piece, they recently, a survey was given to current junior high elective teachers. And they will be, the committee will get back together to look at the feedback from that survey. Middle school principals are processing the health fitness piece for the core for sixth grade, one semester or two semesters. And then also principals are processing world language offerings for middle school. As you know, we currently offer world language options at all six of our schools for eighth graders in Spanish. And then we have a couple of schools that have French. We need to process that further, what that will.
And would sixth graders offer that option? Or it's not till you're in the?
Sixth graders, there certainly are school districts that do offer an elective option. It might be an exploration class for a sixth grader in world languages. We, our current discussions that we focus on with principals is to just kind of maintain the status quo and just keep it in eighth grade and not move it down to seventh and sixth grade. Just looking at the amount of change where we're at right now and giving kids choices and options. So and world language is typically a high school credit course. And we're trying to think about eliminating and not limiting those, you know, credits for kids in middle school. It's not junior highs, it's middle school. Still more to come on that. Work that will begin soon. I mentioned advisory already, the purpose structure, what are the needs? How do we meet the needs of adolescents around the social, emotional needs? The connections to the significant adults? The community team building that kids need, the peer relationships? So we need to focus on that. Time in the day to just be a kid. You know, they're moving from an elementary school now to a middle school. And those sixth graders, we had several questions, several discussions early on if we have play structures at the middle schools or not? And then do we have recess? No and no, but we do need to make sure we're providing movement for students through the classroom, through the instruction, through the electives, and through the time that they have in the day. We need to look at teaming. Many of our teachers are really heavily invested in thinking about teams in middle schools. And so we need to get the team, we need to get a team to start working on team. So that's the part of the middle school, the larger task force work. I'm gonna just stop for a moment. Are there any questions on anything else that you'd like to ask on the larger scope of the work? All right, good. Then we'll dig into the academic program subcommittee.
Oh wait, I have one. Back a little bit, so besides the start time task force having an impact, are there any other task forces that are having an impact on this work? In terms of affecting your schedule or what decisions you make? I'm just kind of wondering, it's helpful for us to know.
Well, there's a crossover with elementary, particularly around instrumental music. And kind of what that's gonna look like at elementary? Or does it begin at middle school? Which is pretty typical in middle school models, so that's a big process.
I leaned over jokingly at Kathleen last night as Lake Washington was presenting and they were talking about outdoor camp at sixth grade. And I leaned over, I said, "Don't even think about it." The other, the other thing that we've talked about that I need to dig back in with is the dual language program and that transition piece. So that impacts Obedi and Leota. And how does that connect? So Kathleen and Carolyn and I, Obedi and I, get together and start talking about it.
And then one of, we'll get a little bit more of this from the start time task force. But one of their conversations early on was where do middle school students fit in the whole trajectory of adolescence? And do they fall into that definition that need to be considered as their developmental needs for a later high school start time? Or are they somehow different from grades nine through twelve students? There's some crossover.
Great question, yes, great question. And then the transition piece, we're working very collaboratively with all the task forces around the transition piece. And that movement from elementary to middle school and connecting that in the middle school to the high school.
So the academic program subcommittees efforts are guided by the scope of work as defined by the middle school grade reconfiguration task force. And that is to research middle school instructional practices related to providing challenging and rigorous curriculum. These are the members of our academic subcommittee. They're represented here. We have some people that overlap, who are on both the grade reconfiguration task force and the subcommittee. And we have some people who, whose sole participation is on the academic subcommittee. And we have three parents. Our subcommittee has been busy. We started meeting June twenty-third, which was just a couple of days after school got out. And we met again in August and then we've met every other week until November twenty-fourth. So we've met a total of eight, we've met eight times, or a total of twenty hours. People have invested a lot of time in this work. There's often homework assigned, so it puts a lot of time outside of the community meetings as well. And we put our meetings on hold because there's more information that we need to gather, including the stakeholder input from the survey that, survey that Mia has planned. So we will meet again, begin meeting again when all of that information is available.
So I have a question, cause putting together, is it one of our outside groups that had put together surveys for us before? Who's putting together?
No, it's, she's working with the task force to put the survey together.
So just a question, why are we not using one of our outside groups? As we've done in the past, like what Mona was asking about later start times and. Is there, is there a?
Decided to do this one internally. We're doing the start time survey that's coming out later this week internally as well. I think just to, because it'd be harder to get a contractor from Oregon up to be talking with and meeting directly with the task force.
So are we interpreting the results? Or does?
Yeah, the, the results from the survey go back to the respective task forces or subcommittees to process and analyze. Ultimately, it'll all go to the task forces, the larger task forces, both high school, elementary, and middle school to process through.
So I reviewed our meeting agendas to give you a summary of work that we have done. We started by taking a really in-depth look at what challenging and rigorous curriculum is and how it's defined by educational experts. We spent time agreeing on some common definitions of terms again, provided by educational experts, so that as we did our work, we didn't have to stop and say, "What do you mean by curriculum?" Or, "What do you mean by rigorous?" So we have our common definition and you have that in your packet. We spent a meeting looking at the attribute of equitable, the tracking and detracting synthesis of research. We looked at the school board performance measures that you look at every year specifically. Algebra by eighth grade, one point six, one point nine. Students who take two or more advanced courses in high school. One point ten, higher level, students taking high level math beyond algebra two. And then one point eleven with the lab science courses. And we looked at those results by subgroups, as we have them presented too as well. And then we spent a little bit of time talking about what our recommendation is gonna look like. It's gonna come in the form of a theory of action. And I'll talk more about that. We had one presentation, one of our meetings, by Derek McDowell, who's our junior preschool principal, but many years as the principal of Ole Miss School in Bellevue. So he gave us the Bellevue story. Spent time looking at how capable students need and what their program should be. We've looked at the developmental characteristics of early adolescents, as Heather and Mia have both talked about. And within the lens of how does that impact their decision-making processes? Looked at math acceleration. We looked at highly capable enrollment data across the district. And you have a sheet of information. And this is, has been a surprise to me that this has been a little bit of a moving target. But in a way, I should be surprised because we're talking about families and kids and their needs and their needs change over time. And we have had students who agreed to placement in AAP and then over the summer, for whatever reasons, and families have many reasons, decided to return to their neighborhood school. And we've gotta tighten up our communication process. So when that happens at the school, we get informed so we can keep our data really straight. Found out in the last couple of weeks about three students who've been identified for the AP but declined services. For whatever reasons, they've been decided on. Those students stayed in their neighborhood school as well. So this is our best information at this point.
So just a quick, quick question that is, or Gretchen. So the state defines highly capable or less for funding purposes as the top two point three percent.
It's two standard deviations from the mean, which is?
Right, but we're, we've got five point three percent of our seventh graders and six percent of our eighth graders. That doesn't necessarily reflect that we're applying a lower standard. It just means we have a higher percentage of our student population that meet that two standard deviation difference.
Cause what you mean, are we talking about, is it a state name or national? It's a national, okay.
And I checked in with Nancy Young and she and Brandon Barquist have been doing some work. And Nancy, at the elementary level, thought that this was consistent with the percentage of students who are highly capable at math level. And Brandon saw that as well across the district, K twelve.
So more a reflection of arguing the district population, not necessarily a watered-down standards on that.
Right. This is our second year of the AAP. That we have a contained program at the junior high. So our seventh graders, we're now, eighth graders is their second year.
So the mean of what? The mean of the tests that they're taking, the ITPS?
So there are specific tests that are, again, used as identification. Or how they're called, ITPS is one, and the COGAT is the other.
And the ITPS is used around the nation as a tool to differentiate who's highly capable and who's not.
When we first started down this road, after the new legislation was passed, we spent a lot of time in professional development ourselves, Nancy and I, with the specifically from, with professors from Whitworth University, who are specialists in their state on capable authentication. And it's a, it's tricky, it's not easy, it's not always cut and dried. But when you take a look at formalized testing, they agree that those two tests are the best ones to use?
The ITPS?
ITPS and the COGAT.
So the student needs to score two standard deviations about whatever the mean is on the ITPS or in total between the two?
That's my understanding.
We could get Brandon.
The last thing on that slide is the class composition analysis. And I feel being dropped.
So the class composition of all the numbers and percentages, yeah. So the first one is just composition throughout the district. So take an example there. Just kind of walk through, if we take a look at English on the far left, let's say special education, total students in a general class or a challenge class. A hundred forty-five special education students. So ten are in the challenge class, so six point nine percent of the one hundred forty-five students. So you can read that throughout each one of those cells there. If that makes sense? And so then you can see just kind of a breakdown through each of the schools as well as you turn the pages through Canyon Park, Kenmore, Leota, North Shore, Skyview, and Crest. And see just the class composition.
See just the class composition for each of those schools in those areas right now. One area there, we see math, seventh grade only, just to be clear, that's the point where they can self-select that particular, that particular year there. And of course, you can see the totals, male, female, total number of students. So you can see approximately, particularly around seventh grade math, approximately fifty-fifty split there for its total. See that throughout each one of them.
So there's a lot of, a lot of different numbers and percentages that we overlook to get first time and process through. One thing that Josh and I have done, and we did this, whatever the name of the subcommittee is that deals with this. We've done that in other areas to look at. And one of the things that is up to go interest or to look at is, in theory, that fifty-one point seventy-eight percent, if we're looking at math, seventh grade only, those that are in the challenge should be the same unless there's some, some barrier, it should be the same, the females should match that number. So fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent of our students are taking challenge math seven, then it would be, a safe assumption, that about fifty-one percent of our females should be in that class and that about fifty-one percent of our males. So if we look at this, we see fifty-one percent, we see forty-eight, which is close. We see males are a little higher represented in math in the seventh grade across the district. The same when you look at free and reduced lunch. Now what we see here is a big gap between how many kids are, so there's some barrier that's keeping students that are in free and reduced lunch out of challenge classes, would appear that way.
Are you talking about just looking at math here?
Yes.
To twenty-four percent?
Yeah.
And the seventy-five percentage general, okay, twenty-four?
Yes, so twenty-four, so fifty-one percent of the, all students are in challenge math seven, but only twenty-four percent of free and reduced lunch students are in there.
Okay, yeah, so help me understand this, so it's not twenty-four percent of the total students of two hundred thirty-nine? It's twenty-four percent?
A bare grudge.
A bare grudge.
So, so, so the fifty-one percent is the fifty-one percent of all students that are seventh graders in the district that are either in regular math or challenge math?
This is out of their free junior high?
Yes.
There's only seven hundred and seventy-one kids, or there's, in all the junior highs, there's fourteen hundred kids total?
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade.
Seven, so that's why I was wondering what happened.
So, so there's two, two things to keep, keep in mind with, with, it's a little tricky. One is, so yes, there are fourteen hundred students, four hundred eighty-nine were in challenge and general math. What's not included in here are students who are either seventh graders who are in algebra, which there are a small number of them doing that, or seventh graders who are in LC classes, special ed classes, special ed math classes. So a student who's identified as having learning difficulties in math could be placed in LC class or a mid-level special ed class, those kids are not represented on here either when we start looking at special ed. So these are strictly kids that are in our challenge math seven or our regular math seven classes, looking at this first, this first band of numbers. So when we, so we see that fifty-one, seven hundred seventy-one, which is fifty-one percent of them are in challenge math, the other forty-eight point two-two percent are in regular math of the, of the fourteen hundred eighty-nine. And then if we track across, we see that we have seven hundred sixty females that fall into that category and forty-eight percent are in challenge math and fifty-one percent are in regular math. And then with males, we see it's seven hundred twenty-nine and you can see the percentage of fifty-five and forty-four. And then of our free and reduced lunch kids that fall into that category, we have two hundred thirty, two hundred thirty-nine and fifty-eight or twenty-four percent are in challenge. So there's something that's acting as a barrier for our free and reduced lunch kids to get into challenge.
We'll be able to target that and figure out ways to increase that.
Right, right. And that's, and remember, this is self-select, so it's not a test, it's something else, right?
Correct, but target to be able to help them meet.
Right, yes.
There might be something.
Exactly. And then when we see five oh fours, there's students that don't qualify for special ed but they have some sort of learning disability that?
Health issue.
Health, or health issue and so they have a five oh four. It's hard to say whether that number should be the exact same or not because there may be some barriers that are keeping those kids out, but.
That to my good personal experience, I mean, I do a list.
Yeah, yeah. Special ed, now remember, we're not talking about kids that are necessarily low functioning in math because those kids, kids that are low functioning kids in math are pulled out of special, are in special ed classes so they're pulled out of these numbers. So if the eighty-six kids, they maybe, they may have a, have a speech communication goal, they might have a reading goal, an organization goal, not necessarily a math goal. And what we see is there's something that's keeping these, keeping those kids out of challenge math as well.
By definition, those are students of average to above average intelligence.
Right.
Have something else, usually acting.
Most of our, I think our special ed, for, for say ninety-eight percent or something, that's our number. Most of our special ed students are average or above average intelligence. They just have things around organization or ADHD or there may be some reading, but they should be very similar.
But out of those eighty-six students, every single one of them can self-select into this. There's not, there's not a barrier in some other area, they, that I'm, that systematic barrier. They can, they can choose to self-select.
Right, they're just not, they're just a percentage. For some reason, they're not, but there's, there's nothing, there's nothing there that's keeping them.
So, another question, can I still send this question?
Well, that's the male one, because that one really didn't make sense.
No, no, so under ELL?
Yes.
The, the, if you go down math, English, the number of total students vary. So would that be because of some kids pulled out into Orion Center or I told, I mean, it makes sense for math, right? But for English and social studies, science, they're all, so that's, that math is seventh grade only, so that might be, that might be lower, but for English, social studies and science, the number of students?
So, to specifically answer, because the numbers are, especially between English and then social studies, but what we do have, some kids that are dual qualified, special ed and ELL. So some of those kids be pulled out, how big that number is, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, are we doubling up any of these, are any of these numbers overlapping? And we're counting these people, these kids twice, a little bit times?
For sure, because you could be special ed, free and reduced lunch and a male.
Then, then my question is, that might not necessarily be accurate, what we're seeing. Doesn't seem like that, help me if I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to get from point A to point B, but that doesn't seem, if they're overlapping, some free and reduced lunch that are special ed are still, I don't know how to say, help me out, Ken, your statistics.
I, I know where you're trying, I believe, so, right, since, since they're, they're not unique, I mean, you almost have to run a regression to know each child that has some of these attributes or not to find out if they're individually significant. So trying to say, are students who are special ed taking more general than challenge statistically speaking? The data, just as you look at it, of many of these is so very clear just from a, you know, the ocular subjective, just looking at it, they're, they're very, very different. But you could have some double counts or there, there individuals in there. The question we don't know, which I think is you're trying to get to, is what were the processes that led to this decision? And it certainly didn't happen in seventh grade when the, the students were free and reduced lunch selected. It happened certainly earlier. And what were the factors that would do that and are they amenable to change? And, and are there mismatches either in, you know, the total male and female population or mismatches in the free and reduced lunch? Should there be students in that, say, just in the math one eighty-one number that should have been in the challenge? Are there some of the students up here that shouldn't have been for whatever? Do you want to talk about that? Because there's no capacity or assessment that I see here. So there's a whole bunch of numbers here, but yeah, I don't know how you make the intelligence of it. It is interesting.
I, I think, I think a point that you're, and I'm not trying to stray too far off topic, but you know, in the reading program in elementary, even though there are only one classroom, kids are being tracked, so to speak, because whatever reading level you're at, if I'm at U, I'm going to get tested, whatever the timeframe is, I'm going to be tested to see, am I staying? Let's say I'm in the fourth grade and I'm at U and I'm reading a grade level ahead, I'm going to kind of keep on that track, if that makes sense, and be tested to make sure I'm staying at that level, but I'm probably not going to be challenged to go above that level. Once you're on a track, that's.